Evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Wayne Westland Community Schools, Monday, February 8th, 2016. Thank you for your attendance. It shows your interest in local education. I'd like to start off with 209.16, the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to call the students from Schweitzer where Jennifer Chambers is the principal, Emily and Isabella. If you can come up front for me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies, if you would stand there for just a couple of minutes. I'm going to read your biographies for everyone. My name is Emily Sents. I am nine years old. I go to Schweitzer Elementary and I am in Mrs. Brown's 4th grade class. I have three brothers, one dog, one cat, and one fish. I play soccer, and I am in the sewing club at Schweitzer. My favorite color is blue, and my favorite book is Wonder. I have been in four plays. My most favorite thing to do is go to school, and when I grow up, I want to be a teacher. Congratulations. My name is Isabel McKeig. I am nine years old. I am in Mrs. Brown's 4th grade class. My hobbies are horseback riding, soccer, sewing, and playing guitar. I have two sisters and one brother. My favorite color is green, and I have two fish and one cat. My most favorite thing to do is go on vacation. You and I were right there on that. When I grow up, I want to be a teacher. So we have two teachers tonight. And now, Mrs. Hines is going to share with you.
Okay, you can face the audience. And on behalf of the Wayne Westland Board of Education, we would like to thank you for doing the Pledge of Allegiance for the flag ceremony, and I would like to present this award to Ms. Emily Sents. You're going, Ms. Emily? I'd like to shake your hand. Thank you so much, congratulations. And I'd like to, on behalf of the Wayne Westland Board of Education, I would also like to give you this award for participating in our flag ceremony for Ms. Isabel McKeig. I'd like to shake your hand as well. And lovely ladies, who did you bring in the audience to support you today?
My mom, right there.
And Ms. Isabel, who did you bring in your family to support you today?
My mom, my dad, my sister, and my principal.
Awesome, what a lovely family. We're going to have you guys take a picture, so I'd like you guys to stand right there.
You did a good job. And at this time, if you'd like, because I know there's homework and things, you may leave, but you're more than welcome to stay, but you are more than welcome to leave at this time. You're welcome. Moving on to 210.16, roll call. Dr. Weaver?
Mr. Buckaloo?
I'm present.
Mr. Griffin is excused tonight. Mrs. Madison?
Present.
Mrs. Hines?
Present.
Mrs. Madell?
I'm here.
Madam President, are you here?
I'm present.
And I am too.
Thank you.
211.16, citizen comments. Dr. Weaver?
This is a place on our agenda where the public may speak to any items that are on our agenda tonight. Are there any? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to 212.16, the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Moved by Dr. Weaver.
Support. Second.
Okay, hold on. I've got too many. Moved by Dr. Weaver, supported by Mrs. Madison. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
And I also vote yes, unanimous vote.
Let the record show a 6-0, with one absent.
Moving on to item number 213.16, review and approval resolution to oppose Michigan PA 269. Dr. Hamala?
Yes. As you recall, the legislature passed Senate Bill 571, the Campaign Finance Act. This legislation included a section prohibiting the sharing of information regarding a ballot question with the community members within 60 days of that ballot question. This bill was signed into law by Governor Snyder despite much opposition to the bill. Many school districts and municipalities expressed frustration about the limitations of this law, and a federal injunction was filed in federal court last week relative to the constitutionality of PA 269. Friday afternoon, Judge John Corbett O'Meara issued an order granting a preliminary injunction on PA 269. This means the law can't be enforced until further action of the court. This lifts the gag order that was currently affecting more than 100 local school districts and communities that have March elections. Judge O'Meara stated in his ruling that public officials deserve clarity on the issue so that they may serve the public in the normal course without fear of arbitrary sanction or prosecution, and that this issue is best resolved through legislative process with due deliberation and debate. Given fast approaching March 8th, 2016 elections, however, time is of the essence and the court must act, were his words. He went on to say that the statute that prohibits the use of public funds to advocate for ballot measures still remains in effect. Although this act does not specifically impact Wayne Westland Community Schools at this time, it would have a negative effect on our ability to share information about any future ballot questions that we might bring before our community. Therefore, I'm asking you as the board to approve a resolution, it's included in your packet, that expresses our opposition to PA 269. I will forward the resolution upon approval to our legislators to ensure they understand our desire to have this act fixed so that we can appropriately inform our community of ballot questions that they have a right to understand prior to making any decisions during an election. The resolution is in your packet. It would read February 8th, 2016, given we are addressing it at this meeting. So I would ask your approval of the resolution, and you can wait reading it.
Okay, that was my next question. Thank you, so we don't have to read it. Okay, so at this time, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to move approval of the resolution.
Moved by Mrs. Madell, seconded by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
I have a question. Do we know, Dr. Hamala, if this injunction applies only to the clause on the 60th moratorium?
Yes.
Only on that?
Just on 57 Part 3.
The rest of the act is still in place.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Let the record reflect a 6-0 vote.
Okay, moving on to 214.16, review and approval, Board of Education's Sections 1000, 5000, and 9000. Dr. Hamala?
Yes, thank you very much. We have our work cut out for us tonight. We have Kevin Sutton with us, and this is our primary agenda item. We've prepared you for this evening's review in the same way as we have our other sections. So Kevin Sutton will take you through the 1000, then the 5000, then the 9000 series. So take it away, Kevin.
I'm really glad the Super Bowl was last night. We all got to bed early, so we'd have plenty of energy for tonight to go through these three sections. Thank you, Dr. Hamala, and good evening to the board. A great pleasure to be here again, and a little bit of a Super Bowl-type agenda in terms of the volume of what we have to go through, the 1000, 5000, and 9000 series. The good news is, these are the last three sections before the book is done, and so a lot to cover, but a light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak. Consistent with my past appearances here before the board as a whole, these are sections that have been discussed with administration, discussed with the applicable committee. I think all three sections are policies, so all three with the policy committee, and now coming before you to go through each section, each line item, for final approval. I think 1000 section is up first, and consistent with what we've done in the past, you have a matrix that corresponds to the section. The 1000 series is the pink, if I pronounced correctly, the hot pink matrix, and the changes in the policy book are in pink or hot pink to let you know where the changes are that correspond within the book. As we've done in the past, I will move across the matrix from left to right, identifying the current district policy, the recommended action, and then a reference point in the policy booklet. Absent objection, I'll keep going until someone tells me to slow down or stop, if that's all right. So we'll begin, thank you. We'll begin with Policy 1001, 1001, on district authority, and we've taken some language from Policy 1001 and added it to the very bottom of Page 1 in the policy book. Language regarding the authority given to the superintendent may be delegated, is referenced on the bottom of Page 1 in the policy book. So that language from 1001 has been integrated into the policy booklet. Policy 1002, school district legal status, is replaced by the existing L&amp;A policy. You will see at the top of Page 1, there is a section already entitled Name and Legal Status, so Policy 1002 would be replaced. Policy 1003 relates to the district's mission statement, and there's a recommendation here to strike the policy, not because the district should not have a mission statement, of course it should, but the vision, mission, and belief document is part of the district improvement plan. It is a living, breathing document, which will have to go revision from time to time, so the recommendation is to have that mission incorporated into that document as opposed to policy per se. Policy 1032 relates to powers and duties, and there is a recommendation here to move the bulk of Policy 1032 to Board Operating Procedures, or the BOP, as it is referred to on the matrix. Generally, within the policy book, Pages 2 to 4 talk about the organization and functioning of the board, and all the various aspects of board operation are contained on Pages 2 to 4 of the policy booklet, but a recommendation that anything from 1032, Powers and Duties, that the board feels might be useful, realign as part of the BOP.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
You have an action note, Revision to Number 7, how to appropriately move to the Board Operating Procedures, and for the life of me, I could not get my head around what that was referring to.
Yes, sir. Within Policy 1032, there is an enumerated list of functions of the board, and Number 7 relates to, it says judicial. The board is responsible for acting as a court of appeal for school staff members, students in the public when issues involve board policies, and their fair implementation. There was some discussion, we felt that some discussion would be appropriate amongst the boards. When it comes time to look at the BOP and moving it to the BOP, how do you do that as a practical matter? Does it need to be aligned with other elements? Are there certain things that we need to think about with respect to its alignment within the policy book, and not just say, we're going to cut and paste the whole thing and put it into the BOP, but give some real thought to the practical implications of moving that Number 7 on the judicial piece to the Board Operating Procedure?
Thank you.
Question?
Yes.
I understand moving this to the Board Operating Procedure, but if this is not, if our duties and responsibilities are not listed in the policies, how are we protected by law?
The duties and responsibilities of the board are articulated, not in an enumerated list like you currently have in 1032, but under the organization and functioning of the board, which again is contained on Pages 2 through 4 of the new policy manual, all of the subsections in terms of board functions and the appropriateness of board functions to give you that necessary coverage under law are outlined therein.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on 1032? I'll move then to 1040, District Goals and Objectives. Again, we felt that this section was generally embodied on Page 1 in terms of the responsibilities of the board, the responsibilities of the superintendent, and recommend a move of 1040 to the Board Operating Procedure, or BOP. Policy 1115, Acceptance of Office, a recommendation here to move the language to the Board Operating Procedure to the extent that the protocols for accepting office are already outlined in state law. I will note, however, that under Page 2, on Page 2 of the policy manual, there is a section specifically attributed to new trustees, and I would note that we've gone through the entire book, and you'll see trustees appearing in pink throughout the book. We've removed the word "members" and changed it to trustees throughout the manual, and so that section, new trustees, formerly said new members, and hopefully, if we caught them all, there are no more members within the entire book. It should say trustees throughout the entire course. Moving then to Policy 1150, Board Officers is the current existing policy, and direct your attention to the bottom of Page 2 of the manual, is a section entitled Election of Officers of the Board. And there was a tremendous amount of discussion on this topic at the policy committee meeting regarding the best method to address election of board officers, and the recommended language from that meeting is contained at the bottom of Page 2, and in essence, notes the appointment of board officers in a manner consistent with the Board Operating Procedures. So to the extent that the board were in agreement with that posture, some development within the Board Operating Procedures of exactly how you want to handle appointment of officers would need to take place. The good news is, it's very early in the year, you've just finished doing that, so you have a tremendous amount of time before the next round of appointments would need to take place, so you could address that in your Board Operating Procedures. Any questions with respect to 1150? Moving then next to 1152, Length of Terms and Terms of Offices. We are generally replacing the language in 1152 with the LA policies within the book on Page 2. There are provisions for both term of office and, again, election of officers to the boards, to the board, excuse me, which will replace Policy 1152. Moving then to Policy 1160, New Member Orientation. To the extent that there were language that the district or the board felt was appropriate to include in the BOP, there is a recommendation to do so, but generally, new member orientation is covered by that section I referenced earlier on new trustees, which is contained on Page 2 of the policy manual. Policy 1162 deals with board member development opportunities, and we have added language to Page 2 of the policy manual under the section of Duties and Responsibilities of Board Trustees, language that is there again in pink to encourage participation in conferences, workshops, in-service programs, and other opportunities so board members can stay informed on current issues and latest developments. Moving then to the top of Page 2 of the matrix, the 1000 matrix, Policy 1167, which addresses compensation. We have added language to the compensation section on Page 3 of the policy manual that aligns with Policy 1167 as it currently exists on the topic of compensation. So that language from 1167 has been incorporated into Page 3 of the policy manual. Policy 1168 deals with the reimbursement of expenses. Generally, the provisions of 1168 have been replaced by the LA policies on Page 3. There's a section towards the bottom quarter of Page 3 which deals specifically with the reimbursement of expenses for board members. Moving to Policy 1170, which deals with board position vacancies. We felt that there was some language within 1170 which was repetitive of the law, recommended that that language, which was not repetitive but was more operational in nature, could be moved to the BOP, the Board Operating Procedures, and I would also note that Page 2 of the manual does have a specific section on vacancies on the board and how those are to be addressed. Moving to Policy 1180, Board Advisory Committees. We took some language from 1180 and added it to Page 2 of the policy book. Again, towards the bottom quarter of Page 2, you will see a new section in pink entitled Committees. We have addressed the board's need and desire to form committees and the parameters associated with doing so. That's towards the bottom of Page 2 in the manual. Moving next to Policy 1185, Advanced Information. Based on the language of Policy 1185, we felt that this was more appropriately suited in the Board Operating Procedure, if the board felt it appropriate. Same too with Policy 1190, Communications to and From the Board. We felt would be more appropriately placed in the Board Operating Procedures. Moving then to Policy 1191, which is entitled Attorney. We have added language, amazingly, in a model policy drafted by attorneys. We didn't have an attorney section, but we added a section consistent with your policy 1191 to Page 4. It's on the bottom, or, excuse me, the top quarter of Page 4 of the policy manual, says Attorney, and in essence, took language very, very similar to that which was contained in Policy 1191. Moving next to Policy 1260, Board Recognition. Board recognition is certainly an important topic. We felt it more appropriate to be contained within the Board Operating Procedures, or BOP, so there's a recommendation to move that section, excuse me, move that policy 1260 to the Board Operating Procedures. Moving next to Policy 1300, which deals with meetings. Generally, replaced by the LA policies, Pages 4 and 5 have an extensive section on the meetings of the Board of Education, the manner in which those meetings are to be held, so on and so forth. To the extent that there was anything in existing Policy 1300 which the board felt strongly about maintaining as operational, certainly could be moved to the BOP as a matter of course. Moving to Policy 1320, yes, ma'am?
Kevin, just to remind, I think we were going to do Rules of Order there, or later at 1325?
1325.
Okay, thanks.
We're at 1320, I think, on agenda, generally replaced by the language in the policy book on Page 4, which talks about regular meetings and the protocols to be associated with having regular meetings. So as appropriate, 1320 could be moved to the Board Operating Procedure. It is otherwise encompassed on Page 4 of the policy manual. And that takes us to 1325, Rules of Order. The board currently maintains a policy on rules of order, Policy 1325, and the methodology in which disputes over procedural issues are supposed to be addressed. The board's current policy is a little bit different than what we had recommended, what we've generally recommended for our clients, that we've worked on with the policy service, and this was a matter of great discussion at the policy committee as well. And so based on that discussion at the policy committee, the language on Page 5, right smack dab in the middle of Page 5, under Rules of Order, has been modified consistent with that discussion, but to Dr. Hamala's reference point, wanted to raise this as a point of discussion for the board if they felt it appropriate. The way the language on Page 5 has been drawn is not to say that Robert's Rules of Order must be used in all circumstances, must be used in all meetings, or anything along those lines. It's been drawn very specifically when there is a disagreement of the board regarding the rules of order for a meeting, and how they're supposed, how we're supposed to resolve those types of disputes. And so language has been added to Page 5 to say that it would only be invoked when there is a disagreement of the board evidenced by a majority vote regarding the rules of order to be followed during a meeting. And so it's really a little bit of a failsafe. If we have a gridlock, if we have a dispute over what the procedure is that we're supposed to follow, and everyone is in agreement by a majority vote that there is a problem or a disagreement with respect to procedure, then and only then would you move to Robert's Rules of Order, as opposed to saying, this is what we're going to use at all times. And so that was, I won't say a recommendation of the policy committee, that language on Page 5 was the outgrowth of a spirited discussion about 1325, and some ideas on how we might approach that. So is there any discussion, any questions?
Mr. Sutton? Mrs. Madell has a...
Did you want to speak on this first? Mrs. Madison?
It doesn't matter. I think the way he worded it was very appropriately worded, and it's, to just kind of clarify, reiterate what he was stating, is this is just for purposes of the board. This isn't for any kind of conflict amongst, that may arise with the community, as much as a process that the board would be able to have a tool to turn to. So if we had any kind of confusion of a process ever arise, it would be a resolution for the board to utilize.
Okay, Mrs. Madell, did you want to say anything?
I know that we did have a spirited discussion, you're correct on that, about using Robert's Rules of Order, knowing that in the past, our Board Policy Manual has said under no circumstances would you use Robert's Rules, and we talked about the concerns that had been presented to us at MASB classes, conferences, about using Robert's Rules, and the mire you can get yourself into by strictly adhering to one addition over another addition, because this is constantly changing, and therefore, you would have to constantly be updating yourself on Robert's Rules and procedures so that you were complying with the latest. We had also talked about dealing with this in the BOP, that we, instead of saying Robert's Rules of Order, that we would refer to the language that we would put in our Board Operating Procedures instead. Now, those could very easily align themselves with a particular Robert's Rules of Order if we wish, and that way, we don't constantly have to keep updating and rearranging how we deal with that conflict, and that would be, you know, the generic statement, and easier to change in the BOP than it is to change a policy. So that was one of the discussions that we did have about this language.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Robert's Rules, are they revised every two years? Something like that.
I apologize, I've lost track. It's every two or three. It's every two or three.
So it's not every day, but it's fairly often. Would we need to appoint someone from the board or someone from administration to serve as a parliamentarian, someone who would be expert on Robert's Rules?
I think that's advisable. That would be advisable. And now, again, to Ms. Madell's suggestion, what we simply could do with the Rules of Order section is to say that the board is going to outline their policy for parliamentary procedures in the Board Operating Procedure, and that, basically, see that reference, as opposed to having any language about Robert's Rules of Order on Page 5. We could certainly do that. We could say, we're going to have our process within the Board Operating Procedures. However, if and only if there is a disagreement, we're going to go to Robert's Rules of Order, and the board will appoint someone who will be familiar with as a parliamentarian, the latest edition of Robert's Rules, in the unlikely and rare occurrence that there is that dispute, and we need somewhere to go. And really, again, the genesis of this was just that unfortunate and hopefully rare occurrence in which there is a disagreement about what the process is.
I can see this developing as a need to table the motion and come back the following month with the decision rendered by our parliamentarian, because unlike you, most of us don't have that background in the law. Board Operating Procedures, as they exist now, need a lot of work. They need to be rectified with policy, and of course, with the policy revisions, and they also probably need to be adjusted for Robert's Rules, that one version or another. But we knew that when we adopted the Board Operating Procedures. We knew it was a good start, but just a start. So having said all of that, I really don't know which way to go. I'm really reluctant to tie us down to something that we can't handle in the process of a meeting.
Dr. Weaver? Hold on, Dr. Weaver wanted to go in, and I'll let you.
My thought here is that we use Robert's Rules, really, in our own version every time we meet. So I'm not sure, for example, if we got into a discussion that had lasted, for example, 15 minutes, 20 minutes, people are, board members are repeating themselves over and over. I have no ability to move for previous question, to call for a vote. So I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit concerned about how this is drafted.
Mrs. Madison?
I kind of lost my train of thought a little bit on it. That's okay, with going, I feel like the most important thing with this is stepping out of our box and our comfort zone, and not so much as looking at it as a negative item here that is like a ticking bomb, and more so look at it as moving forward to having a little bit more structure for us, and saying, let's see how it goes, and if it works for us, it works for us. If it doesn't, it doesn't. But the reality is, like we keep saying with a lot of things, is we keep implying that we are great leaders with great leadership skills, that we're not really dealing with any conflicts, therefore, it's not really that much of a heavy weight of a burden concern as much as a little something in our back pocket to help keep us... as much as a little something in our backpocket to help keep us more conformed in moving forward with our leadership style, and saying, hey, if we do get a little confused, here's a clear structured system that we can just pop on the internet in two minutes and look up and pause a meeting to get us back on track if need be, and it's a simple set of rules that we're all adhering to, that's out there that we're all agreeing to, here are the clear, direct rules if need be, rather than deciding something a majority of a person's or team's way. I personally like the idea, as he had pointed out, it is what other school districts have done, it's a very normal situation to have this in our policy manual. It's certainly not something unique, is it? It's a commonality?
Yeah, it's not unique to have language within policy about how disputes are going to be resolved from a procedural standpoint. And I think, I think what is important to understand is, simply because the language on page five is there in terms of if there is a disagreement, that in no way suggests that there couldn't be or shouldn't be an outline within the Board Operating Procedure about how, as you put it, Dr. Weaver, sort of the loose interpretation of Robert's Rules as you're currently using them. I think that if you've done it that way, you're comfortable with the way it's been done, that can absolutely should be part of the Board Operating Procedure, and should generally be what you're using 99.99% of the time. This language is really only put here in the event of, what if there is a dispute? What if there is a disagreement? And having, there's a blessing and a curse of authoritative texts. In this case, if there is a disagreement, having an authoritative text to go to. I would not disagree with Mr. Buckaloo, that that certainly could lend itself to a situation where you've gotta go and check on something and come back, that certainly can happen. But I suspect if we're in a quagmire where there's a disagreement amongst the Board as to the procedure that needs to be followed, the chances that there's gonna be lots of things that need to be checked may very well be present. And so we can go either way on this, and this is reflective of the discussion that occurred at the policy committee. It was not, of all the things we talked about, it was not crystal clear, like so many others, and we expected that there would be a wide range of feelings on this topic, and so we took a cut at it, not to say that that's what had to be done, but that was sort of a summary of the discussion.
I'm gonna let Dr. Weaver go, but before I let him, I'm, from what I'm kind of hearing, is that because we all take MASB courses, and, you know, when we go through those courses, it was drilled not to use that, so I think that's where some of the issue comes in, because when someone constantly tells you that that's not what you're supposed to do, and that's how you, you know, so then to see it in writing, it's like, okay, hold on, that's, they've been telling us not to do it this way, now we're adding it to, so I think that's where some of the concern is coming from some of the members. And Dr. Weaver, you wanted to...
Yeah, I'm just, first of all, I'd like to thank the committee and you for all of your work on this. But I really believe, and where I'm in disagreement, is that we should be using it in our loose fashion all the time, instead of when a disagreement arises. And I also would like to thank Mr. Buckaloo for his great idea. We need a parliamentarian on this Board to handle any disputes that may occur. From time to time, we have someone who tries to remove something from the agenda, or things like that, and we need to, we need to be governed by something. And so if we're doing it anyway, let's continue with it.
Well, I've been listening, and I hear a lot of great stuff. If we beefed up the Board Operating Procedures on the area of conduct of a meeting, and had in the Board Operating Procedures a lot of the first level of rules that apply to Robert's Rules of Orders, we might have something that would take us through 99% of our meetings. We would never have to go to Robert's Rules. On the rare case where maybe we go to the second or the third level of gamesmanship in Robert's Rules, and that could happen, we might very well have to postpone, come back the next month and deal with the issue at that time, and revise our Board Operating Procedures at the same time to cover that particular eventuality. I don't really have, I don't really have a problem with Robert's Rules of Orders, just so long as we understand that as a practical measure. It can be a trap, it can be a way for one of us to be half again too clever, and that wouldn't push the purpose of the Board or the district forward. So I would, I would be willing to go along with having Robert Rules, Robert's Rules of Order, a parliamentarian to keep us on the right track, but also a beefed up Board Operating Procedure that would make it very unlikely that we would ever have to refer to our parliamentarian.
I, if I can, I, I know this is probably the purview of the policy committee, and if so, I will certainly back away, but I would definitely like to be a part of looking at the rules as it pertains to this Board, what we will use, what we won't use. I think you're absolutely right. I'm just offering myself in case that stems from a separate committee. Because I, again, there are things in Robert's Rules that any member could take a meeting and tie it in knots for just having a bad day that day. So I understand that, but there are things in the rules that we already have been doing, and I just don't see waiting until there's a disagreement. And also, the parliamentarian, whoever that would be, would need to resolve the dispute almost on the spot, because a lot of things our superintendent brings us are time sensitive. And we wouldn't be able to put off for a month.
So, Mr. Sutton, you had made a suggestion, the first, I think it was the first thing you mentioned after Mrs. Madell has spoke. Can you say what that suggestion was again?
Sure.
And you think that maybe we can, maybe possibly, if the Board can agree to do it that way?
Yes, thank you, and I was just scribbling, scribbling some notes on my policy book here. What if, under Rules of Order, before the language that is there now, which talks about disagreements, what if we inserted the sentence, "The Board Operating Procedures will be the authoritative text regarding the procedures to be followed by the Board for any meeting", period?
Is everyone comfortable with that?
Say it again?
I can say it again. "The Board Operating Procedures will be the authoritative text regarding the procedures to be followed by the Board for any meeting", period. Then continue with, "Disagreements of the Board regarding any rules of order will be resolved."
I felt like part of our concern was, or at least in my view, part of the concern, when we had this conversation, was being mindful to maintain transparency with the community, and showing that we had a structured system that we were holding ourselves accountable to. And I just want to make sure that the Board's not reading too much into this, and that it's more seen as, this isn't such a lock and barrel of how the meeting is going to be conducted from A to Z, as much as, if there is a conflict, here's a way for resolution, or here's how we're going to resolve. So I think it's a matter of keeping in mind that that was part of the thought that the committee had when we had this long conversation into it, is keeping in mind that we were holding ourselves accountable to everyone, that, you know, if we have a conflict, here's how we are gonna resolve it. Lead by example was kind of the mindset into it. And I know we've had on many of our series that we've went through, discussed with how we need to really get into the BOP, but it's been more of a priority to get through the policies first.
Ma'am President, real quickly, I think trustee Madison raises a very good point, and she is right, that the language as drafted on page five, in terms of its intended scope, is drafted to look at that, again, hopefully rare occasion in which there is a disagreement. I think, however, what I'm hearing, though, is that you've got a sort of informal way of doing Robert's Rules of Order that have worked. Certainly, the guidance from MASB is sage, and with respect to all operation, because we, there's always gonna be someone in the room that knows Robert's Rules better than somebody. I think, to your point, Ms. Madison, that maintaining that provision that we're talking about that's there already, about if we have a conflict, if we have a disagreement, very transparently, this is what we're gonna do to solve that problem as a group, but I think also reinforcing, and it doesn't have to be the sentence that I crafted on the spot, but reinforcing that you feel strongly that what you've been doing, from an informal standpoint, as outlined in the BOP, or maybe beefed up in the BOP, makes sense, and we want to memorialize that right in our policy, that this is what we do, so if I'm a member of the public and I want to know, okay, well, that's the disagreement language, I understand what you do if you have a problem, what do you do as a matter of course, when you don't have a problem, and referencing the Board Operating Procedures, so I, as a member of the public, can know where to go to find out what your loose definition of Robert's Rules is, which is probably a very good way to do it, at least have something that I can see, that will give me a guidepost in terms of where I should go. So it sort of combines those two concepts of, what we've been doing works, and we want people to know it, but if we ever get bogged down, this is what we're supposed to do to solve it. I think that's generally what I'm hearing, and I think that would be, would be an advisable way to draft this from a legal standpoint. Certainly, the wisdom of it is the Board's to gauge, but legally, I think that would make some sense.
Is everyone okay, knowing that, as soon as we finish the policies, the BOP is the next thing on the agenda anyways, we're going straight into that, is everyone okay with the way he wants to draft it for the policy as it is now? Does everyone...
You're talking about what he just read to us.
Right. With how you just combined your sentence?
I will add that sentence before the word disagreement, so it'll say, "Rules of Order", period. I will insert the sentence that I just read aloud, and then it will continue with what was already there on page five.
Is everyone good with that? Okay, thank you. Good discussion.
All right, absent objection, I'll move then to policy 1330, which deals with the topic of quorum. There is a section on page four of the policy manual that addresses quorum under meeting procedures, and inasmuch as it is repetitive of the law, the existing policy 1330 gets carried forward just with that language on quorum on page four. Policy 1350, pardon me, deals with voting method, generally replaced by the LNA policies under the Voting Section on page four, to the extent that there is language in 1350 which the Board feels would be beneficial, could certainly add to the BOP as part of that BOP revision process as well. Moving to the top of page three of the matrix, the 1,000 matrix, last page of the 1,000 matrix. Policy 1360 deals with minutes, the maintaining of minutes. A recommendation here to move that to the Board Operating Procedure, general reference to page four, and the Michigan Open Meetings Act, which is contained towards the top third of the page, maintaining minutes, a requirement of the OMA, therefore that's embodied, again, at the top third of the page, page four. Policy 1370 deals with public participation, generally replaced by the guidelines at the bottom of page four, carrying on to the top of page five, entitled Guidelines for Public Participation at Board Meetings. There is a reference here to move it to the BOP as appropriate and publish broadly. Certainly, it's at the front of the booklet every night, and every, every meeting, and publishing that broadly, some members of the public are aware of the policies for public participation is appropriate. I do note that we did make one revision, sort of suaspeante, in looking at guidelines for public participation. We, you'll see in yellow highlight towards the bottom of page four, we added that the guidelines may include, but not be limited to. That would give the Board the flexibility to modify those guidelines as it felt appropriate. On doing a final reading with Dr. Harmel, we felt the word, the permissive "may" was a little bit more appropriate, and that's why we've highlighted it in yellow. Moving to policy 1400, News Coverage. There is a recommendation to strike here with a general reference to pages 26 and 27 on school and community relations. As you may recall from my prior times here, there are a number of policies in the existing manual that talk about the district's desire to be responsive to the public, responsive to media, and getting information out. We've recommended striking many of those because of dedicated section on pages 26 and 27 relating to school and community relations. Policy 1410, Relating to Closed Sessions, inasmuch as this is a reiteration of law, and the parameters for closed session are outlined in the Open Meetings Act, there is a recommendation to strike the policy on closed sessions. Policy 1510, Bylaw and Policy Development System, a recommendation to move to the Board Operating Procedure as needed. I would note that the policy manual contains a general bylaw section on page two, and a provision for amendment of bylaws on page five. Those same recommendations carry forward with respect to policy 1550, Bylaw and Policy Adoption, again, a reference to, reassigned to the Board Operating Procedures with the same reference points for bylaws and amendment of bylaws. Moving to policy 1570, Review of Administrative Regulations, a reference to move language as appropriate to the Board Operating Procedure, and adding law, adding language to the bylaw section at the top of page two, and you'll see under the bylaw section on the top of page two, in hot pink, we have added a sentence regarding administrative regulations and the process and protocol for those. So that's 1570, that language has been added to the top of page two under bylaws. Policy 1575, Administration in the Absence of Policy, which is an interesting concept of how to administer in the absence of policy. A recommendation here to move this to the Board Operating Procedure as appropriate or as the Board deems necessary, but in terms of having a policy about what to do in the absence of policy, we did not feel that that was necessary to carry forth. Policy 1580, Suspension of Bylaws and Policies, generally refer you to page five of the policy manual, which deals with the suspension or waiver of the bylaws, so that policy 1580 has been replaced by the LA policies. Policy 1650, Relating to Board Memberships, a recommendation to strike, inasmuch as all of the aspects of board membership are articulated either in law, or have been encapsulated on pages two through four of the policy manual, a recommendation to strike. And finally, policy 1730, Dealing with the Board Legislative Program, a recommendation to strike, inasmuch as the language is superfluous of the superintendent's responsibilities. And that is the 1,000 policy matrix.
At this time, I entertain a motion to accept the policies of section 1,000.
Okay.
Moved by Mr. Buckaloo.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Madison. Any discussion?
I do have one quick question I do have on this. I caught on page two and three, we have vacancies, and it's vacancies on page two, and then is it becoming redundant on three with vacancies and officer positions?
The page two vacancy was intended to address vacancies on the Board, whereas vacancies and officer positions is a little bit of a different animal, and so similar in concepts, but I don't think, I don't think unnecessarily or unduly repetitive.
Keep it the way it is?
I would recommend keeping it the way it is.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Mrs. Madell?
Yes.
Mrs. Madison?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect a six-zero vote.
Okay. Next section is 5,000.
We'll move now to the 5,000 policy matrix. This is the matrix that is in maroon, or dark red, depending on your printer. The changes throughout the manual that are referenced in the maroon color are the changes that are made pursuant to this section. Generally, the Personnel section starts on page 17 of the policy manual, though there's a fair amount of flipping as we go through the matrix, generally starts on page 17. We start with policy 5010, which addresses the topic of goals and objectives. We have generally replaced that policy with the policy book, and the language at the top of page 17 relating generally to personnel and the maintenance of a personnel system. Policy 5015 deals with relationships. Generally, we've felt that the language in 5015 was embodied all the way back on page one, where we give a description of the superintendent and the superintendent's responsibilities as the chief administrative officer. as the chief administrative officer of the district. And so 5015 generally replaced.
Wait a second. It says page 17, but page 17 is 4,000 personnel. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Wait a second.
No, and that's a great question.
I'm shuffling too many pieces of paper here, I'm getting confused.
I'm sure you're not the only one that had that question. So what we've done now that we're to sort of the final revision, final round of revisions, is we've finally added numbers to the LA policy booklet, which is our working document. And so those numbers will not necessarily comport with the district's current numbering system. And so your current numbering system for personnel is the 5,000 series. But within the LA policy book, which will become the final policy book, the personnel section is the 4,000 series.
All right, that makes sense.
So no, that's a fair question.
Wow.
Yes.
I didn't think I missed a meeting.
We wanted to get the numbers in there before the final section. So we are looking at personnel, which is your current 5,000 series, will be the 4,000 series under the new book. I think we were moving now to 5020, which is the policy on equal employment opportunity, generally replaced by the equal employment opportunity language towards the middle of page 17 in the policy book. Policy 5030 deals with nondiscrimination, again, replaced by the LA policies. There is a section not only on discrimination and harassment on page 17, towards the middle. There's also a standalone policy on discrimination and harassment contained on page 34. Similar then to Policy 5040, which is nondiscrimination on the basis of sex. Again, same references, the discrimination and harassment section on page 17, as well as the standalone policy on page 34. You'll note on the matrix under 5040, there was a parenthetical under the action item of match language. Somehow, as we were going through it, the discrimination and harassment language, the categories were different on 17 and 34, but we've addressed that now. So all the categories that are protected on 17 are also protected on page 34. So that has now been made consistent. In similar vein then to Policy 5050 on illegal discrimination, replaced by L and A policies, page 17, discrimination and harassment section, as well as a standalone policy on page 34. We did make a note under illegal discrimination that there may be some appropriateness to move to administrative guidelines, but something to look at as we go through that process. Policy 5060, federal program administration, a recommendation to strike that policy as unnecessary under current structures. Policy 5140, policies and rules development involvement, recommended action to create administrative guidelines relative to non-bargaining topics and include that in administrative guidelines on a going-forward basis. Policy 5160 relating to qualifications and duties, again, a reference and recommended action to move to administrative guidelines. Generally, qualifications and duties of the superintendent are spelled out in the superintendent provisions on page one of the policy manual. Page 5170 dealing with recruitment, yet again, a recommendation to move to administrative guidelines. Generally, recruitment of superintendent is entailed on page one. And to the extent there was some element of recruitment on 5170 that dealt with nepotism, those nepotism provisions are addressed at the bottom of page 17, carrying over to the top of page 18. Going to page two then of the matrix, the 5,000 matrix, Policy 5175 relating to criminal history check, general recommendation to replace with the LA policies at the top of page 18. You'll see that towards the top third or top quarter of page 18, revised policy on criminal background check. The current policy, 5175, is very, very extensive. There's a lot of detail therein. And so a recommendation that we could consider to put that in administrative guidelines as necessary, or from a policy perspective, page 18 covers what needs to be covered. Policy 5190 dealing with personal staff development opportunities. Again, this is yet another signal of development opportunities, really included in two places. All the way back on page six, we addressed it as part of another section, and we added it to the curriculum section in purple back on page six. And then we've also added language to page 21 in terms of professional development opportunities. So that language is embodied in both places. You'll see at the top of page 21, a new section added called personal slash staff development opportunities. So that language is in there, clearly signaling that as a priority for the district. Policy 5200 relates to staff conduct. And so what we've done is taken some language from 5270 on staff conduct and added it to page 17 as appropriate under the personnel section. You'll see towards the top quarter of page 17, the language there that is the third paragraph under personnel in maroon, indicating that all staff members have the responsibility to familiarize themselves with the laws of the state of Michigan, the policy of the board, and administrative regulations. So making sure that that is clear under staff conduct, 5200. Moving then to 5203, policy exists on political campaigns. What we've done is we've added a section to the bottom of page 21 of the policy manual, which addresses, excuse me, in the middle of page 21, which addresses political activities of employees. It's right towards the middle of page 21. The maroon language there under outside activities addresses political activities, which was language that was contained within Policy 5203. Moving then to Policy 5204, which relates to political signs. We've created a new section, this is the one I was talking about, at the bottom of page 27, that relates to elections and political activities, addresses the concepts of political signs contained with 5204, within 5204, excuse me, and creates a new section on the bottom of page 27 called elections and political activities. Moving to Policy 5205, leave before and after the holidays, recommendation to strike this policy because the parameters for leave before and after holidays are contained within the collective bargaining agreements for employees. Similar recommendation with respect to Policy 5210 on the topic of employee attendance, a recommendation to strike because those provisions are contained within the collective bargaining agreements. Policy 5215 relating to work schedules, there's a recommendation to move the language in 5215 to administrative guidelines as appropriate. The reference is page 17, the personnel section generally towards the top of page 17, which gives the district the right to establish work schedules for employees. Policy 5220, 5220 relates to staff-student relations. There's a recommendation to strike generally because the language is covered by the law with respect to those relations. But we have recommended adding language to page 27, which deals with digital communications. And you'll see on page 27, towards the middle of the page, there's a new section that's been created that's in all maroon. The reference number within the new book is 7,000.07, addresses digital communications. And we felt digital communications was a very good way, a very productive way to address online conduct. So many policies that I've seen drafted by other districts talk about, you know, thou shalt not be on Facebook, thou shalt not use Twitter, so on and so forth. And that's a very sort of restrictive way to think about it, phrasing it in the context of digital communications. We've had very good success working with other districts and framing the topic in that way. And so we've recommended this language on page 27, this new section on digital communications to address the concepts of staff-student relations as embodied in Policy 5220. Moving to Policy 5230, which addresses conflict of interest, generally replaced by the LA policies on page 21, the section dealing with outside activities of employees. Same too then with Policy 5260, which deals with the topic of solicitations, generally replaced by the LA policies on page 21 within the section outside activities. Policy 5270 deals with the topic of gifts. And it's something that we addressed actually as we were looking at the 9,000 series, the general public and organizational relations series. So there are revisions to the gifts to school personnel section at the top of page 21, which actually appear in light blue, which again is part of a different series, but I wanted to make reference there where it says prior changes recommended. Those changes are recommended as part of the 9,000 series, not as the 5,000 series. But we've combined the concepts from 5270 with the 9,000 series on gifts and the giving of gifts. So we'll talk about that a little bit later when we talk about the 9,000 series. Policy 5290 deals with evaluations of staff, generally replaced on pages 19 and 20 of the policy manual under the topic of evaluations, discipline, discharge, resignations, so on and so forth. Moving to the top of page three of the 5,000 matrix, the personnel matrix. Policy 5291 dealing with the topic of layoff and recall, generally replaced by the LA policies, pages 18 and 19 of your of your policy book, a section towards the bottom third of page 18, carrying over to 19, dealing with the topic of staffing, layoff, and recall of teachers, consistent with the recent changes in state law. That same section applies to Policy 5292, which deals with the placement of teachers. Again, we're referencing pages 18 and 19 of the policy book on staffing, layoff, and recall of teachers, et cetera. Policy 5300 deals with the topic of personnel records, excuse me, and the maintenance of those records. General recommendation here to move Policy 5300 to administrative guidelines. As the board is probably aware, there are record retention guidelines that are issued by the state on a regular basis. Those would also come into play here, but to the extent that there was something in 5300 that we thought went beyond the general record guidelines, we could move it to administrative guidelines would be a more appropriate place for it. Policy 5340 deals with staff health and safety, generally replaced by the LA policies, pages 24 and 25, which deal generally with facilities and operations and the requirements for safety, security, hazardous chemicals, so on and so forth. Policy 5350 addresses the topic of a drug-free workplace, generally replaced by the LA policies on page 18, sections on alcohol and drug-free workplace towards the middle of the page on page 18, thus replacing Policy 5350. Policy 5355 dealing with medical examinations, generally replaced by the LA policies on page 19. Towards the bottom third of the page, there is a section on page 19 dealing with medical examinations. Policy 5357 dealing with the Family Medical Leave Act, generally replaced by the L and A policies, though there were some minor language revisions to the FMLA section at the middle of page 19, consistent with the district's 12-month period that they use to measure FMLA leave as opposed to the rolling calendar method, which was in our model policies. That is the language on the middle of page 19 that has been highlighted. And we also made a revision towards the very end of that section about the employing having the option to use that paid time concurrent with any FMLA leave to bring you bring the policy language in accordance with your current practices. So those changes are referenced on page 19 of the policy book. Policy 5360 deals with the Employee Assistance Program. We've had this conversation in the past, as we talked about other policies, that if you're going to have it in policy and require it, you should do it. This is one of those instances where we felt that having it in administrative guidelines, having an EAP in administrative guidelines as opposed to policy was a more advisable placement for it. Policy 5365 dealing with drug screening, a recommendation to move that language as appropriate to administrative guidelines, to a certain extent, it is already permitted by law, and page 18 does provide for drug testing for omnibus transportation employees, consistent with the law. Policy 5370 deals with communicable diseases, replaced by the LA policies within the booklet. There's a standalone communicable diseases policy on page 32. Policy 5390 deals with mileage expenses. We have added language to page 25 under the transportation section to incorporate the provisions of Policy 5390 on mileage reimbursement. It jumps out at the bottom third of the page under transportation, which is a lot of orange and then some dark red, which is the language that we have taken from 5390 on mileage expenses and incorporated it on page 25 towards the bottom third of the page. Professional staff contracts is Policy 5410, 5410 professional staff contracts. We have taken that language from 5410 and added it to page 21 of the manual. You will see a section called professional staff contracts at the very bottom of page 21, a new section added. So 5410 and the district's practice with respect to professional staff contracts has been integrated into the policy manual on page 21. Page, or excuse me, Policy 5540 deals with discipline and discharge of employees, generally replaced within the booklet on page 20 under the discipline and discharge sections, which you see towards the middle of page 20. Moving then to the last one-half page within the 5,000 matrix, Policy 5640 deals with non-school employment. This has generally been replaced within the policy book on page 21 under the category of outside activities. The next three policies, 5701, employment of non-certified personnel, 5710, compensation guides and contracts, and 5725, qualifications and duties, a recommendation to strike all three of these policies as unnecessary. 5800, evaluation of non-certified staff, a recommendation to move the language from that policy either to administrative guidelines or to have it incorporated within collective bargaining agreements on future rounds of negotiation, to the extent it's not already included within collective bargaining agreements. We felt that either AGs or CBA were more appropriate placement than within the policy book. 5830 deals with suspension and dismissal of non-certified staff, generally again replaced by the LA policies on page 20, that extensive discipline and discharge section towards the bottom half of page 20. And then finally, 5920, another topic dealing with non-school employment, again, recommendation to strike based on the inclusion on page 21, language relative to outside activities. And that is the 5,000 series.
At this time, I'll take a motion to accept the 5,000 series.
Move to accept.
Support.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, supported by Mrs. Hines. Any discussion? Dr. Harmala.
Yes, I'd like to ask Kelly Bowles, she was giving me a wave on the 5357 FMLA. So do you have a clarification there, Kelly, you want to provide everybody?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Harmala. On the FMLA leave, Mr. Sutton, the employees are required to exhaust paid sick accrual and have the option for vacation. Is that conflicting with the language as written here?
Page 19. 19, middle of the page.
So employees have the option of using vacation but for sick days, which I think counts as paid time under their collective bargaining agreement concurrently with the FMLA. How's that there if it's just a matter of collective bargaining agreement?
That's a fair question. I think ultimately, the collective bargaining agreement rules on how that is interpreted. I don't know that there would be a revision to the language that would clear things up anymore, anymore than we have. But ultimately, in terms of interpretation, the collective bargaining agreement would rule.
Any more discussion?
There's a number of references to administrative guidelines. A lot of the policy that we had has now moved over into administrative guidelines. And it's my understanding that we're not going to have a copy of the administrative guidelines. And yet, at the same time, if a new administrative guideline comes our way, it has to be presented to the board, not for approval, but for information purposes. Am I correct so far?
That is correct, sir, yes.
Then back to the beginning, are we going to have access to a copy of administrative guidelines should on an occasion we feel the need?
Yeah, I'll let Dr. Harmala address that.
Yeah, actually, I'm going to speak a little bit about that tonight in my superintendent's report, but it just in terms of next steps. But our goal is to get both policy and the administrative guidelines on the district website. So you would see policy and guideline. They're not secret, they're not meant to be hidden from anyone. So once they all get developed systematically, or current ones that we have would only need tweaking, or some are good as is, then we'll get them all on the website. But that's the goal. So they wouldn't be hidden from anybody.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Mrs. Madell.
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect a six-zero vote.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the series 9,000. Moving on to Series 9,000.
Okay, the 9,000 series, your current 9,000 series, which is the general public and organizational relations, is the blue matrix, I guess the lighter blue matrix, that you have with you. And while we will cover several pages within the new manual, a great majority of it is on page twenty-six and the pages thereafter, which is the new 7,000 series of the new manual, but we are looking at your current 9,000 series.
Could it make this just a little bit more complicated?
Well, you know, it was too straightforward, so we wanted to make sure we added some dynamics to it.
You're trying to make sure we're awake for this meeting.
If you're awake, I would be impressed, that's good. All right, we'll go with, start with Policy 9010, Public Information Systems, again, replaced generally by the LA Policy Book, both on the topic of page twenty-six, which talks about the goal of school and community relations. There also is a reference to page twenty-four, to the extent there was some language in 9010 that dealt with hazardous chemicals and substances, that topic has already been covered on page twenty-four of the LA Policy Manual. 9020 deals with news media relations, again, another one of many policies that were in the book, dealing with these types of relations. There's a recommendation to strike Policy 9020, generally the spirit of sharing information and being open is embodied on page twenty-six, within the Goal Section of School and Community Relations. So too with respect to Policy 9110, Board Community Relations, again, another recommendation to strike, inasmuch as that the spirit of that policy is contained within page twenty-six, the goal for school and community relations. 9150 deals with the Sex Education Advisory aboard. This was a policy that we felt more appropriately contained within Administrative Guidelines. The topic of sex ed and whatnot is embodied within the Curriculum Development Section, which we talked about many, many months ago, is on page fourteen of the updated booklet, but generally that topic we felt more appropriately in Administrative Guidelines. 9230, dealing with school volunteers, again, as a recommendation to move to Administrative Guidelines. Generally, I've referenced page twenty-six and twenty-seven, which is the entirety of the School-Community Relations section. The spirit of 9230, dealing with school volunteers, is embodied therein. Obviously, our volunteers are an invaluable resource, we want them to volunteer, we want their involvement, and we felt that that was adequately communicated on pages twenty-six and twenty-seven, the School-Community Relations section. 9250, dealing with the use of district facilities, generally replaced on page twenty-six, the section towards the middle of the page, community use of school district facilities, to the extent there was some additional language in 9250 that might be helpful in terms of operational aspects, a recommendation to move that additional language to Administrative Guidelines. Policy 9260 addresses the topic of school equipment for private use. We have added language to page twenty-three of the policy manual, under the Risk Management heading. This is towards the top third of page twenty-three. It is that language in light blue that we have taken from Policy 9260, in essence saying that an employee is only going to use district equipment when it's in connection with their assigned duties and prior approval of a supervisor, which is consistent with Policy 9260. Moving then to Policy 9300, which relates to tobacco products. That policy generally replaced by the LNA Policies on page twenty-five. There is a section on tobacco-free environment, so the spirit of 9300 replaced on page twenty-five. Takes us to Policy 9320, Possession of Firearms. Recommendation here is to add language from the district's currently existing policy on the possession of firearms to the Safety and Security section, and you can see that's been done on page twenty-four, towards the middle of the page, under the Safety and Security heading. This is in the Facilities and Operations series. There is that language towards the middle of the page in light blue that embodies the district's current policy on possession of firearms, Policy 9320. Any questions on Policy 9320?
I thought we had a discussion about how we weren't going to touch the old policy at all until the dust settles on everything, and then look at revising this policy.
Yeah, so 9320, and I apologize, I lost my mark here in my thing. 9320 generally prohibits the possession of firearms on school grounds. And the language that has been inserted in the middle is basically an embodiment of 9320, just on page twenty-four. So the policy is the same. The district's current policy is that there should be no firearms in school. The language on twenty-four says there should be no firearms in school. What Vice President Madell is referring to is a debate that is going on, not only in our legislature, but we have competing decisions from courts. We're all very familiar with the Ann Arbor decision. There was a decision in CLIO schools that was the opposite of the Ann Arbor decision. And so this is a matter that has not been resolved, I guess, to a degree of reasonable legal certainty on the possession of firearms, but I have generally counseled all of my school clients, not just those with whom I've worked on policy, that the idea of maintaining a policy prohibiting firearms is in the best interest of students. And if we have a judge or someone that tells us later on that we were wrong, that we have to remove that policy, I'd much rather be in that position than having no policy on the possession of firearms. So the language in the middle of page twenty-four in light blue is absolutely consistent with your current policy, 9320, which prohibits the possession of firearms on school grounds. Any questions on that? I'll move then to Policy 9350, and this was the one I alluded to earlier, on Public Gifts and Bequests. We're referencing page twenty-one, which addressed the gift issue, gifts to school personnel. And there is a note in the Matrix of making this language consistent with the realistic understanding of traditional and appropriate practice of gift-giving to staff members, which I don't remember us being that verbose when we talked about it, but I think that might have been me.
We had some discussion, because I pointed out that there was law over this and...
Indeed, and I think the idea here is that, you know, certainly to the extent a student goes out of their way to do something for a staff member or a group of students, do something to do something for one of our staff members who've given extra time, supported them, we certainly don't want to discourage that, but we want to set some reasonable limits with respect to what would be appropriate and inappropriate. And so that language is in light blue at the top of page twenty-one, as I alluded to it earlier. Moving then to top of page two, page two of the Matrix, the 9,000 Matrix. 9370 deals with the free materials distribution in schools, and we reference page twenty-seven, which is a section on the distribution of materials, excuse me, information and materials towards the top third of page twenty-seven. Generally, a recommendation to move the language from 9370 as helpful and beneficial to Administrative Guidelines, otherwise generally replaced by the language at the top of page twenty-seven. Policy 9375 deals with advertising in school district-sponsored fora. The recommendation was to add language to page twenty-six, and you'll see that a new section has been created on page twenty-six of the policy manual, and it's towards the bottom quarter of page twenty-six. It is in light blue, and it is a new section entitled Advertising. It does actually carry over one sentence to the top of page twenty-seven, but gives the parameters under which the district would consider allowing advertising and utilizing advertising if opportunities were to present themselves. Certainly, it would be envisioned that there would be Administrative Guidelines that would go along with this policy once that hurdle gets tackled, but this would be the policy that would be in place with respect to advertising, and again, embodies the spirit of 9375 on advertising. Any questions on 9375? I'm going to move to 9376, relates to COPPA, recommendation to move to Administrative Guidelines as appropriate, reference in the Matrix to page twenty-nine, there is an acceptable use policy within the manual, which we believe embodies the provisions of 9376. Policy 9400 deals with visitors to the school. Again, a recommendation to move the language from 9400 to Administrative Guidelines. Generally, the topics of safety and security are contained on page twenty-four of the policy manual, so we would recommend moving language from 9400 to Administrative Guidelines. 9450 deals with complaints. General recommendation to move language as beneficial from 9450 to Administrative Guidelines, noting that on page twenty-seven, there is a specific section towards the top third of the page that deals with public complaints. And in working with Dr. Hamala and her assistant Cheryl, we've made sure that in the index it is listed both as public complaints and complaints, comma, public. So if people wanted to know where to find it, they would find it either way within the index, but that section is there on page twenty-seven. What we see next on the rest of the Matrix on page two, the final seven or eight entries, are a number of policies that relate generally to these relations between the district and various entities. And in all instances, because the spirit of cooperation and transparency and working with community is embodied on page twenty-six as it relates to school and community relations, there is a recommendation to strike all of these policies, not because they're not important, but because the spirit of that level of cooperation is embodied. So I'm referencing within the Matrix Policies 9500 through 9710, which takes us through the bottom of page two of the Matrix on the 9,000 series. I will continue then to the third and final page of the 9,000 Matrix. Similar, as we start at the top of the third page, Policy 9720 deals with parent and school partnerships, a recommendation to strike because that is embodied within the School and Community Relations section. Policy 9730 addresses the topic of relationship with booster organizations. Because it was specific to booster organizations, we've referenced the Extracurricular Activities section, which is on pages eight and nine of the manual. It's in red, we dealt with it probably ten or eleven months ago, but that is in, dealing with that topic is on the Extracurricular Activities section on pages eight and nine. We've recommended moving any additional language which might be beneficial to Administrative Guidelines. For the next four policies on the Matrix, again, recommendation to strike as being consistent with the spirit of school and community relations, 9820, 9830, and 9840, all recommendation to strike. I do note Policy 9740 is a little bit different, talks about parental notification of teacher assignment, certainly a good thing for parents to be notified. We recommend striking it as a policy, however, it is an operational thing, and so having a policy, we've recommended striking that. That takes us to the bottom categories on page three of the Matrix. We're looking at Policy 9855, Post-Secondary Credit Opportunities. Again, the spirit of 9855 is contained within the Curriculum and Development Sections, which we talked about some time ago on page fourteen, to the extent that there is language in Policy 9855, which is beneficial from an operational standpoint, a reference to move that language to Administrative Guidelines. Policy 9900, Education Research Agencies, falls within that same category of being part of the School-Community Relations embodiment, and so we've recommended striking that. Policy 9920 deals with the topic of school accreditation. We believe that that's, that the spirit of 9920 is encapsulated in a few different places within the manual, pages six and seven, which deal with learning and achievement, page fourteen, which deals with curriculum development, both sections that we reviewed and revised earlier, to the extent that there are operational aspects of school accreditation that could be moved to Administrative Guidelines, that is referenced in the Matrix. And last but not least, Policy 9950, State Education Agency Relations, again, as being consistent with the spirit of school and community relations on page twenty-six and twenty-seven, we have recommended a strike of Policy 9950, and that is the 9,000 series.
Thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion to accept the 9,000 series.
A motion to accept the 9,000 series.
Moved by Mrs. Heinz, and supported by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
Mrs. Madell.
Yes.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz.
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect a six-zero vote.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Moving on to 215.16, Review and Approval of Business Services and Finance Items.
We do have one recommended motion at the bottom of the page.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, so you want me to...
The recommended motion is that we would resolve to strike our entire old policy manual and its contents, given we just reviewed and approved a bunch of sections, so you're certainly welcome to read the whole resolution there that we're recommending, but that's in essence what we're making sure that people know, this would no longer be the guide, but the new version would.
Okay, thank you. Motion?
Yes.
Support.
So moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Mrs. Madison. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz.
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
Mrs. Madell.
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect a six-zero vote.
Okay, again, thank you, Mr. Sutton.
Thank you very much, thank you.
And moving on to 215.16, Review and Approval of Business Services and Finance Items, Mr. Larson Schuyler.
Okay, thank you, President Walker. This is to, the computers were recommended by the CTE Advisory Committee to replace the current 2009 computers. The purchase was built into CTE's 2015-16 budget from 61A funding and general funds in the general fund. The computers will allow class to run CAD software. Computers meet district specifications, are being purchased on a consortium bid contract pricing.
I entertain a motion.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Buckaloo.
Support.
Supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Madison.
Yes.
Mrs. Heinz.
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Yes.
Mrs. Madell.
Yes.
I vote yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Let the record reflect a six-zero vote.
Thank you. Moving on to 216.16, Head Start Monthly Report, Mrs. Madell.
As required by federal law, you received in your board packet a copy of the Head Start Monthly Financial Report. You received this report for both December and January. What wasn't included was a program report, and I understand that will be included next month, so that you can see the progress that our students are making in Head Start, because just like the rest of our students, they need to be assessed at regular intervals. Also, we are fully enrolled at this point, but we are shy some students for a waiting list, so that when vacancies do occur, we have students who have already gone through that process that can be slotted in just a little bit more easily. And pretty soon we'll be coming up to the time for enrollment for next school year already. It's only February, and we're talking about next school year. But anybody who's interested in our Head Start program and qualify, please, come join us.
Thank you, Mrs. Madell. Moving on to 217.16, Superintendent Report, Dr. Hamala.
Yes, thank you, President Walker. I mentioned earlier, talking about briefly, the development of the Administrative Guidelines for all of these policies we just adopted. We will embark on developing and/or revising the Administrative Guidelines, or often otherwise known as regulations, and that'll provide the implementation for the very policies that were just approved. Because it's important to ensure the guidelines serve the intent of the policy, and ultimately our students and their education, we've crafted a process by which we will gather feedback from our staff within the development and revision process. We've shared this with all of our staff through the Superintendent Scoop Newsletter. Some of our guidelines will serve us well and remain unchanged. Other guidelines will definitely need to be revisited, and once my cabinet has approved a given set of guidelines, it will be shared with you, the Board of Education, via the update. We will also be posting them with the affiliated policies on our district website. That will not be a speedy undertaking, so we'll be plugging away at those, but I wanted to make sure you know that we will get them done and posted. I wanted to update on the Priority School Status. We're pleased to announce that Hamilton Elementary was removed from the state's list of priority schools. Hamilton was identified within the 2012 cohort and has met all three of the required exit criteria, meaning in the top-to-bottom ranking, they're above the fifth percentile. The school met its annual measurable objectives for both reading and mathematics for all student groups, and the school has at least 95% of its students participating in the state assessments. Hicks Elementary School remains on the list, and we will continue our reform work as we have planned, and the staff at Hicks are doing a good job of focusing their efforts. And the stability we've had with the staff at Hicks over the last two years has been tremendously helpful. So I appreciate all of the staff at both schools for their hard work, and we'll continue the hard work at Hicks. A strategic planning update, our straight colder meetings have finished, they've come to an end. The core guiding team will convene this week to select an ad hoc committee that will review, analyze, and summarize all the data collected. They'll do that with the assistance of Michigan Leadership Institute, John They'll do that with the assistance of Michigan Leadership Institute, John Silvery, who's been facilitating all of our community meetings. Those summaries will then go to our administrators in their various departments for the development of long-term goals, which will again be reviewed by the ad hoc committee to make sure they're in line with the data that was reviewed, and eventually, and we're still on track for our presentation to the board in the spring. Midwinter recess will occur Monday, February fifteenth through Friday, February nineteenth. We'd like to tell all of our students to have a wonderful, safe, enjoyable break. I, I know some of you are wishing there would be some snow. I'm not wishing there would be snow, but maybe there'll be a little for you. Enjoy your break, and we'll look forward to seeing you again on Monday, February twenty-second. And then finally, and I'm sharing this last intentionally as the item that sticks in your brain, our school calendar has changed. We will be closed to students on Tuesday, March the eighth. This is Michigan's presidential primary election date, and many of our schools host multiple polling precincts, so our previously scheduled staff development day from April twenty-eighth will now be moved to March eighth. So, in summary, no students on March eighth. Students come on April twenty-eighth, and we'll be sending out information in our school newsletters and posting on our district website. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Harmala. Moving on to two one eight point one six, citizen comments, non agenda items, General, Dr. Weaver.
This is the point in our agenda where we welcome the community comments, and there has been, no one has turned in paperwork to speak.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on, two one nine point one six, review and recommendations of the Board of Education, Ms. Hines.
Um, I'd like to give a really good shout-out to Marshall Upper Elementary. I was able, I was able to go to their awards assembly, and out of the sixth graders, seventy-three percent of the sixth graders and fifth graders were able to receive academic awards and attended citizenship and athletics. That was outstanding, and I congratulate all the administrative staff. You guys are doing an excellent job with our schools, and I'd just really like to thank you all for just doing that, because that helps bring more kids into our district, showing the academic excellence that we have in upper elementary and even in the high school. We have, like Dr. Harmala said earlier, about the five children getting the Gates Awards, scholarship programs, getting college paid, and to get their doctorates, that is amazing. So, I'd like to applaud everybody for doing such a great job with our children.
Mrs. Madison.
I would like to give a very big thank you to Mr. Sutton. I know we had much deliberation and debate over taking on such a big chunk of the policies to be able to finish that up tonight. Thank you so much. I, I didn't doubt you for a second that we could do it, that's why I kept pushing to let this happen tonight, and I'm glad that we were able to complete it so successfully and expediently, all due to all the hard work you had put into it, and I'd like to thank the board for being willing to let us, you know, muster through all of this tonight and get it complete. I'll look forward to being able to move now onto our BOP and get everything else rolling.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Buckaloo.
Thank you. I'd like to echo your sentiments, you've done a fantastic job. I had my doubts, but they were personal. I wasn't sure I was going to get through this myself. It is a tremendous undertaking, just, just trying to follow what the committee and you and Dr. Harmala have done, and, and I know that there's much more work to, to do on that. And I think on the board operating procedures, the committee has its hands full there, making sure that, that document is consistent with our policies, is consistent with Robert's rules, to the extent that that's appropriate, and that it meets the needs of, of our meeting. And if there's some way that the committee can elicit ideas from the other four members of the board without crossing over any restrictions of the Open Meetings Act, I would be open to, and I think that Dr. Weaver suggested the same thing, that several of us would like to have some input, not by being a member of the committee, but by answering questionnaires perhaps that the committee sends out or, or requests for information. I think that it's a big undertaking, and so there's that. PA sixty-nine is probably the worst thing in terms of democracy that I've seen in my short time on the board. The injunction is well, well-placed. By preventing us from providing information to the voters on a topic, we certainly do not promote democracy, in fact, we do just the opposite. We ensure that people go to the polls without the appropriate information, and that's, that's wrong. And I had wished that that injunction had covered more than just the section dealing with the prohibition against school districts and municipalities providing information. The dark money aspects of PA two sixty-nine that allow politicians to double their campaign funds and, and not report where those funds come from is, well, again, it's the opposite of what a democracy should be all about. So, two sixty-nine, I'm glad that we passed a resolution in opposition to it. If my good friend, Mr. Griffin, were here today, I'm sure he would say something about emergency managers. We've seen the tragedy, we've seen the tragedy of emergency managers and, and their mismanagement in Flint and in Detroit. That tragedy is, is kind of inherent in the purpose of the emergency manager. The idea that we can cut services, wholeheartedly cut services, in order to save a dollar here or a dollar there is, is ridiculous. How much money have we saved in, in Detroit? They have, what, a three and a half billion dollar deficit over the, the last sixteen years of emergency management? Who knows what the costs are going to be in Flint, whether we can reline those pipes or if we have to replace those pipes? Those are dollars that are going to come out of my pocket and your pocket, in both cases. The whole promise that cutting services is, is appropriate is, is ridiculous. It's important to us here in the school district that we educate our students, and in order to do that, we have to have appropriate funding to operate a school district. We have to pay our employees, we have to make sure that we can maintain programs. And again, we're not getting the appropriate funding. It would be worse if we were visited with an emergency manager. So, that's what I have tonight, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank Emily Sence and Isabel McCag for leading us in the pledge tonight. And also, I've mentioned this a couple of times, and I would just like to put it out there during a regular meeting for our board president and fellow board members to consider. I'd like to ask that we consider adding a student achievement committee. Usually, we hear, once a year at the superintendent's evaluation, about glitches that we have that either deny student achievement or help build student achievement, and I would like to see us add that committee, and my reasons are these, so that the board can be advised throughout the year as to students' successes and failures, what we're doing about that. And also, one of our main problems is trans latency, and it could be that we could look into and develop a plan to curb the trans latency in our students in the district. So, I'm asking, formally asking, that we take that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Mrs. Madell?
Thank you. Today, Mrs. Hines and I got a chance to do coffee with our legislators and county commissioner and hear about the pieces of legislation that have been lately introduced. Some of them will probably not see the light of day, but they have that possibility still hanging out there, that they could be rushed through. We've seen this happen time and time again with pieces of, of legislation that you don't think have legs, and the next thing you know, it's going to the governor for signing. So, make sure that you, you get a chance when you get your packets to take a look at the upcoming pieces of legislation, because some of them will affect how we do business here. As most of you are aware, we are in the middle of NWEA testing again, and I know some of our students are involved in that, and I'm sure they're real thrilled, but it gives us a good picture of what their strength and weakness is, so we know where to attack next to help them be more successful in their class. Coming, going forward, this week is pretty busy out there in all of our buildings. We've got several buildings that are having someone's special dance, which means you can bring either parent, aunt, uncle, grandpa, grandma with you, as long as it's somebody special to the school dance, and that makes it a little bit easier for students who don't always have access to both parents on a school night. Going forward, we also have a lot of ELA nights, math nights, science nights, social studies nights going on in our buildings for our parents to come with their student and enjoy and see what the kids are working on in their classroom. Tomorrow night, I'm gonna get a chance to go to the film premiere that Career Tech is hosting. It is their film program. They are putting out for the public what they have been working on. That will be at the State Wayne Theater on Michigan Avenue, and I, I know that I'm going at five o'clock in the, in the evening for first presentation. I think they're doing a couple of them during the evening tomorrow night. I also want to congratulate our spelling bee winners. This is an opportunity for me to really feel dumb. I really enjoy going to the spelling bee and having kids out spell me from time to time, but knowing that they've had a chance to practice the words, and I haven't, it's a little just unfair. But I always enjoy going to it and seeing the kids in their conquest of, of difficult words and knowing that they'll be going down to the Charles H. Wright Museum next month to participate. In the last couple of years, and I know Mr. Baughman did make mention of this to the, the viewing public, that in the last couple of years, we have made it almost to the end. One year, I run into Alexis every once in a while at the high school, she came in second, I think, one year. We have been very fortunate to have our students get that far against some really stiff competition. So, congratulations to those students, and we'll look forward to seeing how well they do in March. And I just want everybody to have a safe vacation. Don't fall off any mountains, don't get, you know, run over in the amount of snow that we have on a toboggan run. Yeah, more like getting grass stains on your, your knees instead. But come back to us safely. We want to see you back here with smiles ready to go after midwinter break, and the same goes for all of us, too. Come back safely.
Thank you, Mrs. Madell. Okay. Again, echoing, Dr. Weaver, I just want to thank the pledge students, Isabel McCag and Emily Sence. I want to thank the policy committee for taking your time out to get everything, get this together, Mr. Sutton. Thank the board for working together and coming up to get through this. This is something that we started last time when I was president, and here we are at the end, so it's good to see it come and be completed. I also want to just let everyone know that the dinners for our champion programs for both schools are this week, and that is a program that is awesome, and we now have it in both schools, and that's something that your students might want to look into, and we can always use mentors as well at both schools, and so that's really important, and it's just showing how our kids, give them an opportunity to shine and let them see that they can reach a goal that they set for themselves. And so, with that being said, that ends my report, and at this time, I'll take a motion to, for adjournment. So, and happy, whatever, one on a break. Yeah, happy Valentine's Day and have a safe break, and... So moved. Moved by Mrs. Madell.
Second.
Second by Dr. Weaver. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Have a good night.